Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 15th, 2011. It's 9:00 a.m. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Troll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Here.
Councilmember DeStefano.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the February 1st council meeting and the February 8th council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
I have correction on the, um, first one, the minutes of the business meeting.
Okay.
On page, um, page seven, where we have these comments from council. I just want to correct the statement there which doesn't reflect what I said, so if I may, I'd like to read into the record what I did say.
Please go ahead.
Uh, this is in reference to the comments, the record at the meetings that we have had at the county office building, and I reference the fact that many people dislike government because it's so bureaucratic, and what I said was that it's fruitless to try to reinvent the wheel and just, and we should just try to correct the, and I was referencing Enterprise Flag, the current dysfunctional Enterprise Flag entity to reflect what is already structured. And I said that the Enterprise Florida model is what we should be trying to replicate, and I said that there's no need to start layering more bureaucratic nonsense on top of what is already in place, and we should just start using the two that we have that have been laid out by Enterprise Florida before we start taxing, spending, or throwing money at undefined targets. And I finally said that let's straighten out the bends in the road that is preventing the Enterprise Flagler from functioning as the economic engine that it's supposed to be, and let's move forward with a rework model in Enterprise Flagler that should be closer to the Enterprise Florida model that seemed to be working elsewhere in Florida. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, do you have the gist of that? Yes. Cool. Are there any other additions?
You got it.
Comments? If there are no other corrections, then we have a motion to approve as corrected.
The motion approved. Is that it?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Next item on your agenda, agenda item number two, ordinance repealing the existing stormwater ordinance. Mr. Landon, uh, Mr. Reichman, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Title of this is an ordinance of the city council, the city of Palm Coast, Florida, amending and restating Chapter 24, Article 3, Division 3. Stormwater management utility of the Code of Ordinances provides for conflict severability, classification, and an effective date.
Thank you very much, Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, I am going to do this presentation today. Okay. It's been a long haul, say the least. I think it's important to give a little bit of the history as to how we got to where we are today, and some, what we consider to be fairly significant changes from the last time you all visited this issue. The, really, the history goes all the way back to ITT days when ITT came in and got approval of a conference of land use plan, affectionately always referred to as the Palm Coast Club or ITT Club. And that included stormwater improvements, basically to do a couple of things. One of them was to try to create high and dry land, could say drain the swamp so that development could occur, but then also when it rained, to convey that water back to the ocean, if you will, through the intercoastal. All right, fast forward, the city incorporated about 11 years ago, and the stormwater system became the responsibility and maintenance of the city. At that time, we, the system was being maintained by the Palm Coast Community Development Corporation, and they had their own taxing authority through the county, if you will, or tax dollars coming in through the county. When the city took it over, I believe it was either 2004, 2005, we established a stormwater utility. This is where most cities handle stormwater, not all of them, but the idea is that your stormwater system is operate, should operate a lot like a utility, whether that's water, sewer, electric, et cetera. And to operate like a utility, you have a utility fee, and the utility fee should be based on your usage or benefit, as a lot of people you'll hear talk about in this case. At the time, there was an ordinance that was adopted to establish that fee, and it was based on old law and old processes, if you will, and was much more generic across the board, where everybody paid a similar amount. Since that time, the courts in Florida have ruled that it is, in order to be called a fee, you have to have a mechanism to distinguish between different degrees of use of a system or benefit from the system, meaning that if you benefit more, you pay more; if you benefit less, you pay less, to meet the criteria of a fee. There's other criteria. Our ordinance really does not meet that ruling of the Florida courts. In 2008, some of the larger property owners hired an attorney to put us on notice that our ordinance was in violation of the rulings, new rulings of the Florida court, and that they actually had some properties that had developed their own stormwater system that is now required in Florida, and they wanted credit for that stormwater system and the benefits it provided and reduce the impact on our system. Our attorneys looked at that request and agreed, well, looked at that request and our ordinance and agreed that something has to change in order for our ordinance to be, well, it has to be updated in order to meet Florida law. All right, so now we're kind of in overview of why we're doing this. We are not doing this because we want to as much as we are doing this proposing this stormwater ordinance because we have to. Our attorneys have told us that we need to update our ordinance, and property owners have told us if we don't update it, they'd be more than happy to take us to court and have the court tell us to do it. So, in 2008, of these major property owners, they agreed not to sue us at that time if we moved forward. Well, this is not an easy system. Takes, in order to meet state law, our attorney said, first of all, you have to have a technical document that actually shows the reduced level of service that certain properties receive over others, and you distinguish between that level of service, but that has to be based on technical science and not just a pull it out of your hat. So, we hired the experts and proceeded with developing a system that would meet state law. That in itself took substantial amount of time, I believe about a year. Then we started meeting with interested parties and invited anybody and everybody, and there became a number of issues that we tried to address, and then this thing started growing as we continued to address different issues. We then presented to city council a few months ago, a proposed ordinance that received quite a bit of opposition. You all were uncomfortable with it and asked us to go back and see if we couldn't change it to bring it back up to a level where we could at least work with some of the major property owners. It came back to you again, you rejected it again. So then at this point, we have stepped back and have proposed significant changes to, number one, try to address some of the additional concerns of property owners, and then also the concerns that city council expressed. I can tell you that we are, there are people who do not want to pay a fee at all, and that use our system, and we are not proposing that anybody who uses our system doesn't pay a fee at all, so there are people who are not going to be totally happy, but we have addressed, and I think you see the audience is a whole lot smaller today than what it was the last time we presented this, because we have addressed a lot of those. All right, background. Now we go on to kind of an overview. Current ordinance, as I stated, has to change. This isn't, well, I mean, I guess you could leave it, but your attorneys are saying it doesn't meet state law, so it, in our opinion, professional opinion, it has to change. There are some basic principles. If a property owner does not use the city system, the city maintained system, that property owner should not pay. That is all part of being a fee and not a tax. Probably the best example of this is, that we've all talked about, is a good portion of Grand Haven, Colbert Lane. Grand Haven has a community development district. It's actually a taxing district that is responsible for their stormwater system, and their stormwater system then discharges directly into the intercoastal and doesn't go into a city maintained system. So, we have, our proposal would be is that they are not in our service boundary and therefore should not pay. A, another good example, another basic principle, I guess you could call it, is that a property owner that uses our system should pay, and if you, if you, this is one of those where you'll have people say, "Well, I could, I don't need that canal. My water, my swale flows off my property, and I don't need that canal a mile down the way." Well, actually, you do need the canal because once the water flows out of your neighborhood, it has to go somewhere, and therefore the maintenance of that canal, the idea is everybody has to contribute towards that maintenance. And then as far as receiving benefit, one of the basic principles we have, and not everybody agrees with this, that whether you want to use our system or not, or your property, you want your property to drain in our system, if it, if your property does drain into a city maintained system, you receive a benefit. We've expanded that, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, to try to address the benefit issue. Also, another basic principle that you have to have in your ordinance based on the court decisions, is that a property owner that has done something to reduce the impact on our system, and that is most property owners that build today, commercial or new development, that they have to build ponds to retain or detain. For the rest of this presentation, I'm just going to call it detain. There is a distinction, but you'll just bear with me that trying to always distinguish between retain and detain, I'll let the engineers do that, but I'm going to call it detain. If you detain the water on your property, you're reducing the impact on the system, therefore you should get a reduction. There's some other, a reduction in the fee. There's some other reasons to get a reduction in the fee that we'll go over later. There are, in essence, as we go through this, three basic categories of property owners, and I think it's very indicative as to who is, who is not opposed to this, who supports it, and then those that don't support it. Most of, most of the residents, that's the majority of the payers out there, obviously, this proposal is not, does not change their fee. They currently pay $8 a month, and we call that an ERU. An ERU is an equivalent residential unit. It's what the engineers do to come up with how much water comes off your property, and for a quarter acre lot that has an average house on it, that's an ERU, and there's $8 a month. The proposal is for that to stay the same. Then there are property owners where they will see a reduction in their fees, and the reduction is basically for two reasons. One of them, such as a majority of Grand Haven, they are not in the service area, therefore they won't pay at all, so their fee goes all the way down to zero. Then you will have people who have put in their system once again, and they will get a reduction. People who could get a reduction because we have an easement or a city stormwater system on their property that currently they're paying for that portion of their property, and we're saying, no, they should not have to pay if it's actually part of the city stormwater system. We have an easement, so we reduce their fee by that area that is actually part of the city system is another example. Now, the last one is property owners who have not paid in the past, but do use our system. So, currently, we have people who have, who use our system. In other words, they have drainage that flows into our canals, our drains, but they do not pay a dime. That has to do with some of the old calculations, because historically, anybody who did not have platted property, in other words, you record a document at the courthouse, whether water flowed off your property into our system or not, you didn't have to pay. And once again, if you want to have a totally fair system, if you use the system, our philosophy at staff and professional level is, and a legal standpoint, is that you should pay. Those are the three categories. Did I promise you that this was going to be a long presentation?
Can I bring a log?
Yeah. It is, it is complicated, and based on what has happened in the past, the city council, we feel it's very necessary to try to get into the details. All right, credits and exemptions. This is one of, this slide shows how we are actually giving, reducing people's fees, giving them credits, or actually exempting them or a portion of their property from a fee for, for different reasons. Once again, those reasons are that if you have features on your property that reduces a runoff, then you should not have to pay the same amount as people who, the runoff goes directly into the drainage system and into our maintained area. Okay, first of all, if you have a permitted stormwater system, then automatically you get a 23% discount. This is where you have a pond, water, and if it meets the minimum standards, and it has to meet minimum standards to get a permit, you get a 23% discount. I would move on down to the third bullet, which is tied into this one, and that is that if you actually detain water above the minimum, then there's this calculation that the engineers do. It's 0.22% of every 1% reduction of peak discharge, and the engineers know what that means, that you get, you know, that additional, above and beyond the automatic standard 23%. A 100% exemption, as we've talked about, is if you're outside the service area, and by definition, that means your water on your property, when it rains, does not flow into our system at any time. You are exempt and don't have to pay fees at all. Then you get into other features, cause additional, either exemptions of the fee or reduction of the fee. A good example is any of the city system, you would get that area that is under a city easement, that might be on your property, that area would be deducted from your land area. So even though you have a, say you have a ditch that runs along the side of your property, you own the property, but we have an easement to maintain that ditch, we won't charge you a fee for that portion of your property. If you have a 100-year floodplain, that area also is deducted from the area of your property, so you get a 100% exemption on all floodplain. In blue on the screen, you will see including wet ponds. This one's an interesting debate with engineers, because they would tell you that pond is above the floodplain, and that when it rains, there's water that flows off of that pond into the system, and that rain hits that pond, and therefore it should be included. I ask them to please, and says, "Well, you do floodplain, you give exemption for floodplain, but that property right there that's underwater all the time and is flooded 100% of the time, you won't give me an exemption to it." I said, "It makes no sense," and we've got to make this thing make a little more sense to the user, so we've added that anything that, a wet pond is inconsistent with being flooded all the time, and therefore give people an exemption for that, that area. This will actually help the residential areas that have nothing other than a pond in their common area, and they won't understand why they have to pay a fee for that pond that's actually, but privately owned. All right, wetlands. Once again, if you have designated wetlands on your property, or you can demonstrate that you have property that qualifies as a wetlands, those areas are also then deducted from your land area, and you do not pay a fee for wetlands. Then we get into the, another new one. We've always talked about a reduction of service credit. This is where, if there are properties, some of them undeveloped, some of them developed, that we do not maintain the swell system, or we, there is some properties that actually have put in curb and gutter and an underground stormwater piping system, and the city does not maintain that. We were just talking with the reduced service credit of those areas that are not developed and have no swells to maintain, but we've added to, to the language here in our proposing that it only makes sense that if we don't maintain your swell system or pipe system, and it dumps into our, say, one of our canals, then you also would get the reduced level of service, the same as undeveloped property. So, a good example of this maybe, and it has to be, well, the best example, once again, I'll keep using Grand Haven, where we don't go in and maintain their streets, it's all maintained by the community development district. Another good example maybe, but we have to confirm, might be Town Center, because the Town Center ponds, the city does not maintain. We do have discussions as to who is going to maintain the pipes under the road in Town Center, and if the CDD takes on that responsibility, and we don't have to replace those pipes, et cetera, it makes sense that they don't have to pay the same level of fee. So those are a couple of examples we're talking about. All right. What is major differences? Some of these, in, at the workshop, you have already heard. Some of them are new. The blue type on the screen are really new information since the workshop. Probably the most significant change, and one that is, had received a great deal of support from existing developed property owners, primarily your landlords, if you will, is that instead of requiring all property owners to come in and ask for an appeal, meaning that we were going to send them a bill under the original proposal for the full amount, and then if they provided us with information that showed they should be, that amount should be reduced, we would do so. The issue there was some people were going to have to go out and hire engineers or provide information. Some of that, a lot of that information, we already have in our files, so we've changed that process in this proposal, and we no longer are saying that every property owner has to come in to appeal. We actually will determine their credits. And when I say we, our city staff, with, along with our consulting engineers, will determine, based on our records, how much given property is eligible for. We will then send that information to the property owner and let them know that this is our calculations. They can accept that, or they can then come back with additional information through an appeal process and say, "Oh, you didn't know this," or "We disagree with this." We are proposing a nominal deposit with that appeal of $60. This is the same deposit that we have in our utility department if someone wants us to check their water meter and actually test their water meter, pull it, take it to the testing facility, and because they think it's not running correctly. Think you want to do that. Many times they are not running correctly, they are running slow. Very seldom are they running fast, and if we test them, very likely you have not been paying as much as you should be, because meters slow down, they don't speed up, but we will do this. Same concept here. If the meter is not right, we give you your $60 back. If it is correct or is running slow, then we keep the $60. The idea here is the same thing, is that it would be a deposit, and if we agree with the appeal, you get your $60 back. If you don't agree with the appeal, we keep the $60. Trying to make it so that everybody just doesn't automatically appeal, just to avoid that rush on free appeals. No property size thresholds. If you recall, we were trying to say, okay, if you're over five acres, you get treated one way; if you're over 25, you get kicked in another. People did not like that. We were doing it for ease, trying to do some automatic credits, but understood why people did not think it was fair. If I'm 4.98 acres versus 5.01 acres, I get treated differently, so we have eliminated thresholds, except for the definition of a single-family resident, and I think that definition is still two acres. If you have a home on two acres, you get the same as anybody else, it's zero to two acres. All right. And I hope, Juan, you have brought that, because I just realized I forgot my, my book. We have provided you with a chart of all the bulk lands, and that chart shows the price of, or what we think the maximum that those large vacant lands, and bulk lands is no longer actually a definition in here, because we don't have thresholds any longer, but we have provided that for you. We have also, as you will see, some options that will come up, because how much vacant property owners are charged, and what kind of discount they get is the main controversial issue out there, so we're trying to help you with that. All right. Other things that you have not seen. We have, and some of you We have, and some of you, you know, planners and engineers don't always think the same, have the same lingo. I got an email from our engineers that said that some language about eighty-two percent of the area outside of the original Palm Coast club in the amount of stormwater, I took it as being eighty-two percent less. They said, no, it's only eighteen percent less. It's eighty-two percent the same. So one of the things that has come up, and this is where it gets complicated, is, well, first of all, these ideas came from conversations with property owners, with our attorneys, with our engineers. Our attorney called and asked, is there additional capacity for the vacant land in our existing canals? The answer to that is yes. That's one of the reasons why there's a benefit is that those canals were designed to handle development from much of those vacant lands. In other words, when the stormwater system went in, it went in with the idea that every quarter acre lot has a house on it. It's not the case today, wasn't the case back then by any stretch. But that's what the stormwater system's designed for. It also took into account those areas outside the land use plan, the club. Because the club was a zoning boundary, basically a straight line. That doesn't follow the contours of the land and therefore the drainage spaces. So the canals were actually developed to handle water outside the developed area. But because they were anticipating it not have hard surfaces, it was designed to handle a reduced amount of water than those areas inside the developed areas. Because the courts have actually reconfirmed just recently that a utility can charge a base rate, basically a reservation fee. Because even if you're using, or not using the system, the system is there for your use. It's that same reason why if your house goes vacant, you still are charged your base fees because there's a cost to make sure that when you do turn your water back on, that there's available water. Well, so using that principle with this one. And that the benefit is, is that when the developers want to develop their property, there's a canal there that will handle their water that you can call a reservation fee or a reserve fee. Is what we have up on the screen. The idea though, is if you were outside the club, the canal was designed to have less area for you than if you're inside the club. So the reservation amount should be less. So we're proposing that those areas that are outside the original club, they're all now been, the conference of plans been changed, or I should say, I believe all of them, close to all of them, have been approved for development. But we are proposing that those areas outside the club get us eighteen percent reduction because the canal system was designed at eighteen percent reduction for their water. So once again, the benefit. I already talked about exempting wet ponds, that's something new, based on comments we've received and, and hard to argue with. And then the reduced service credit for those areas that have, we do not maintain their system that we've already talked about. All right. Now, options. City council asked for staff to attempt to work out something that was fair for the property owners. We originally proposed the seventy percent reduction because they, that seventy percent came from the idea that thirty percent of our cost goes towards maintaining canals and seventy percent goes towards maintaining swells and pipes. And because they have no swells and pipes, they, those large vacant properties shouldn't be paying that seventy percent. But because their water discharges into our canals, they should be paying for. It's a basic principle. What we have up on the slide is the more detailed information where it shows how many ERUs for the different categories, land use category. So over here on the left, single family, we have a total of twenty-nine thousand four hundred ERUs. I think I need new contacts, does that say twenty-nine four, hopefully? All right, duplex, multi, you know, it's interesting here that we have thirty-four hundred ERUs. Those are single family residential equivalencies of large vacant lands. Why? Because those people have platted. So if you want to be consistent, some people are paying, some are not, based on whether they recorded a document in the, in the courthouse. Doesn't sound a whole lot fair, and that's one of the reasons why we're proposing the change. With a total of fifty-six thousand seven hundred ERUs, eight dollars an ERU, I mean, I worked eight dollars a month for a single family residence. We are collecting approximately five point four million dollars in stormwater fees. And that is consistent with our budget. All right. If you charged a hundred percent and did not give the vacant land credit, you could reduce the rate down to five dollars and seventy-one cents versus the eight dollars and still get the same amount of money. That's what this chart is trying to show. The fact of it is, is that you, it is not fair to not reduce it because they don't get the same level of service. Then what our recommendation is here is a dark blue. And, and that is to give them a seventy percent reduction. And if, with the seventy percent reduction, you still have an ERU of, or price per ERU of seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. You could reduce it down to, and to maintain the same amount of revenue. At seventy-five percent, which is the green, if you give them a seventy-five percent discount, you then would keep the eight dollar fee and about the same amount of revenue. We've put up there eighty, ninety. And we've changed a hundred percent to ninety-eight percent. Because ninety-eight percent is what the representative of the large property owners, it's by no, by no stretch, all the property owners. But they said that they could support a ninety-eight percent reduction. The problem with the ninety-eight percent reduction is that in order to keep the same revenue, we would have to increase the ERUs to about nine dollars, one dollar. Just, just for, for your information, if you will. Now, this, well, I think I will move on. So that's the chart, I'm sure we'll come back to it. The bulk land, and once again, we don't have a defined bulk land, but just to try to give you the, the numbers here. We went through and did a chart and we handed it out to you before. I actually had extra copies, hopefully, Juan, did you get copies of it now? Okay, if council wants to see them, we have copies of that again. It is, they range from seventy-five dollars to up to forty thousand dollars is what they could be charged, these would be maximum. That forty thousand dollars, I recall, was over four hundred acres. There are a hundred and sixteen properties that we have in this category. The average fee per property is seventy-five hundred dollars. The average fee per acre would be eighty-five dollars. Realizing that the average fee for a quarter acre for a single family lot, vacant single family lot, is seventy-one dollars. If you have a single family lot with a house on it, you're paying ninety-six dollars. Now this is apples and oranges, the eighty-five dollars is an acre. The ninety-six dollars is a quarter acre. So just to give you a feel for what the seventy percent discount, it is close to, you know, once again, almost seventy percent less than what you're charging, single family residents. All right. As promised, we, we went back and, and we actually delayed this a couple of weeks, trying to come up with something that we could work out and gain support, but still have good rational, professional, technical reasons for our recommendation. I can tell you that that individual property owners and residential areas that qualify for credits will receive credits through their HOA, was one of the messages we sent. It's almost impossible to send it to those individual property owners. So if they get credit for a stormwater system, then the HOA is who we will give that credit to. If they have common area, we will deduct it from the fee on their common area. If they don't have common area, then we'll write them a check. Is basically a way that would, would work. That question came up. We want to make sure that it was clear that the entire easement area was exempt. There was some, it would only be those area that was used for stormwater facilities. Because sometimes we'll have roads that we use for access to it, et cetera. We believe that's all part of the stormwater system. The sixty dollar deposit, I've already talked about in great length. Received pretty good support for that concept, the people that came to the meeting. The reduction in service credit, we've talked about that for stormwater systems that are maintained privately. The multiple credits will be calculated separately. This was an issue of, all right, if I get a seventy percent credit and a twenty-three percent credit, is that a ninety-three percent credit? No, you, you get the seventy percent and then that, you take that figure and then you get twenty-three percent on that, we're just keeping that. The last issue that, I don't, I won't say last issue. Another issue was we have a formal request that we go retroactive all the way back to two thousand four, five, when we enacted the original ordinance and not just the April oh eight. The two thousand eight date came from the time when we received the notice from property owners that our, our ordinance was not consistent with state law. And so that's when I asked their attorney, if, well, if you don't sue us, then we would support having the reduced fee start at that point. And that they would get credits. They have now asked for those credits to go all the way back to the original. City council does not have to make this retroactive. It, it's a one-way street. I want to stress that, that those property owners who have not been paying what they should be paid, paying, you, you can't go back and, and charge more. You can only give credits back. So it really is a, a one-way, one-way street as far as retroactivity. We are still supporting the idea of April two thousand eight. That's what administration told people back then and we continue with that. Even though, once again, city council does not have to, to do that. Let me, there's a couple of other things that have come up since the delay two weeks ago. One of them, I, very consistent with what we've talked about. There have been pointed out to us that we actually have properties, not very many. Town center happens to be one of them, that does not flow into our canals. They flow into the inner coastal through a ditch. And therefore, the maintenance of the canals, they get no benefit from. There is a mowing and maybe excavation of a ditch that they do receive benefit. And we are in agreement that the cost of that ditch needs to be their calculation, not the cost of maintaining the canal, since they get no benefit from the canal. So we need to make sure that there's that flexibility in the ordinance to be realistic for where we are. One last, so I think we agreed with that last issue. Don't agree with the retroactivity back to the inception of the ordinance. One last thing is the reduced service credits for the vacant lands that do not have infrastructure. Don't have the, we call horizontal development, your streets, your water, your sewer. The main thrust here and a couple of things, we've, we've tried real hard to come up with something fair, is that the idea that they use our system, they should pay. They, they receive a benefit, still our attorneys assure us that there's some legal merit to that. You're, then the attorneys also though stress that if there is actually capacity in those canals that they use, that a reservation fee concept, the courts have always uptailed. So this is where we are proposing, once again, that if you're outside of the original club, then you should get an additional eighteen percent reduction. As the amount of capacity in the canals is eighteen percent less on average. I also then would suggest that city council could try to come up with an additional reduction based on the fact that your reservation fees are usually not the same as when you use it. Let me try to explain that. When someone has water and they are using water, they pay both the base rate and the use rate. If you have a meter but don't use water, you pay just the base rate. That I think is one of the, kind of the concepts here is there's a canal there. They really could care less whether it's there right now. But when they want to develop their property, they're going to like the fact that they, it's there because it being there allows them to develop their property, if you will. And it's real complicated because they're still reducing and I, I understand that. But that canal actually then gives them the benefit of developing their property. So I decided to go to my favorite accountants and, and start talking, not technical engineering, but more in line with fees and what makes sense. And we talked about if you, your average residential user has a, pays both a base rate and a use rate with the use rate being about sixty percent of your charges and your base rate being about forty percent. So you could use that as an argument of sixty percent, another sixty percent reduction because they aren't really wanting to use it at this point, but the reservation's there for the future. So with, if city council likes that idea, then there is some merit to that. It is a little bit of a convoluted way of calculating it, but I think there is, it's defensible based on the averages on other utilities. The last thing that I, Mr. Britt came up with is if you want to, you could just, and I, boy, how do you don't, you quote me saying, I'm, I'm in favor, I am not in favor of this, but you can do away with the fee and just add this to your property taxes. Okay? And then you don't have to worry about whether they benefit or not because taxes don't have this, the use and benefit. Everybody can just pay the same amount based on some other calculation. Or in this case, your, your property values. your property values. If that was to happen, a eighty-five, it would be the same or close to the same according to, and I don't understand this calculation, Ray would have to explain it to you, is an eighty-five percent credit for the undeveloped areas. In other words, if they had a tax on this property, it would be the same amount as the eighty-five percent credit. So, anything that goes above eighty-five percent credit would be more than a credit than what they would have if they had to pay taxes and it wasn't actually a fee. Is that a criteria? No. But is it trying to show you where you, the room is for what would be fair? I think it, trying real hard to at least give you some guidelines. So, bottom line is, is what staff was, can support, and I think we can support even with the numbers, with the reservation, is in that range of the seventy to eighty-five percent credit for the undeveloped properties that don't have horizontal. If you go above that, you see the options, that's your option, but it would be more of just an arbitrary, trying to develop a number fee that would reduce the controversy and that's, that's your option too. Apologize for the very, very lengthy, but this has been a very long, difficult process. Once again, I'm going to close by stressing that we have to make changes to the ordinance because of the legal ramifications. We're trying to give you options. The idea is hopefully we would have the first reading approved today, but with city council instructing staff and your attorneys how, or what exactly you would like us to propose to you for the second reading. We would then go back and revise the ordinance, revise the technical manual to reflect those, that direction and come back for a second reading. Hopefully in two weeks, if we can get it done. If not, it would be two weeks after that for sure. That's where we are. But we really do need direction at the end of this as to what options you want to go with so that hopefully we can bring something back that will receive your support. That's all we have.
That's yours. Okay. Let's try to follow the procedure. Council questions on what's been presented. Mr. Mayor.
First off, Jim, congratulations because this is a very difficult subject. You guys have put a lot of work into it. You know, there's a lot of good within this rule. I wanted to get a lot of that good freed up a couple of weeks back, but you know, we're still discussing, so I just want you to know that I recognize the hard work that the staff has put into it and I've seen a lot of improvements here. Some of the questions that I've got, can you define for me what we mean by outside of the original club? I know what's, I know what's in my mind that is. I want to know what staff's mind it is. Is it specifically, I guess I'll ask, is it the blue lands? Is it the red lands? Or is it the developed acres that showed up on the club as forty-two thousand acres with residential lots on them?
John, do you know the answer to that?
Well, the answer, it's in the club and there is in volume three, or well, no, volume one, I'm sorry. Volume one, it shows a everyday plan of the developed acres and it's very specific. I can't tell you whether it's blue land or red land because I'm not familiar.
And, but you remember the arguments, it was, what was the red lands were the future DRIs and the blue lands were ones DCA said, no way, you can't develop that right now.
I think the short answer would be there was an approved, original conference of land use plan. I mean, I see the document, I haven't looked at any great detail, but it was that original approved document. Now, if there was amendments as we go along, I think that's good, we need to make sure that's understood before we bring.
And the reason I ask, Jim, is that, you know, I'm the bright shiny face that used to have to argue that areas within the forty-two thousand developed acres should be exempt from rules and regulations at the state level and federal level because of previous agreements we had with the state and the feds. And then areas, for example, we're going to be a separate DRI. Grand Haven's a perfect example, it was known as River Club back then. And we did a master plan and a master stormwater system, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I think then, based on what you just said, yes, it's that area that everybody's kind of recognized as, this was approved and you can't go back in and try to retrofit and impose the new rules on it. Is that what you're?
Well, except that a lot of the bulk lands, I mean, there's, there's undeveloped parcels within this forty-two thousand acres that we're talking about that were listed as reserve parcels. And in my mind, clearly, those are like smack dab in the middle of a developed area and they're going to have to use our system.
Right, right. Those would not be outside the club.
Right. And then there's other areas, like some of these blue lands areas, some of these red lands areas, that were outside those areas. And now, some of those areas have been annexed into the city just recently. You know, west of US one. And that's why I'm looking for some clarification on what exactly we're talking about.
We will bring you a map of exactly what that area is based on our understanding. I can tell you the line that I've seen is east of US one, or east of the railroad tracks, I'd say that, but I think it's east of US one.
Certainly, good portions of it are. Can you go back to your what's different slide? Because my next couple of questions are basically related to that. The permitted, let's see, where did I see, it may not be on this one, but did you say something to the equivalent of that permitted systems receive a twenty-five percent discount? Is that?
Permanent systems automatically receive a twenty-three percent discount.
Twenty-three percent, okay. The reason I ask on that one is, some of the permitted systems within, I'm going back to that forty-two thousand acres now, some of those systems, like Woodlands is probably a good example, was an old stormwater permit called seventeen twenty-five. It was a half an inch of water over the site. Other projects like Arlington and the Hamptons would have a different level because they were slightly bigger and they tripped a different permitting threshold. So, my question is, if a, if a permitted system was one of the seventeen twenty-five or what they call the forty, I hate to do this, the forty C forty-two permits, the half inch over the side permits, do they get less of a credit than those projects that did the twenty-five year, twenty-four hour storm, forty C four type permits? You get my point of the question there?
Do we have an?
The smaller, the smaller projects would only deal with a half an inch of water over the side. The larger projects would be, would have to handle almost nine and a half inches of water and only release it at a certain rate.
On the questions, guys, there's two ways, if we know the answer, let's try to get the answer. If we don't, we need to make a list of them and get it to them before the final reading. So, do we know the answer to that one?
We currently have just the one credit, the twenty-three percent, so that it doesn't make a distinction between how much is, how much was have, happened to be retained or detained. We could certainly do that, we could make the calculation, but right now, we, for simplicity's sake, we just have one.
But, but something like Woodhaven, is there any privately owned system being maintained in Woodhaven?
Discharges in the ditch ten.
Okay, so there is, so I think in my mind, the key to it is, is what I just heard, is if there is a privately maintained system, then they should get a credit and we don't distinguish between exactly what that system is, up to twenty-three percent. If they exceed the standard of today, whatever that standard is.
Not today, they won't exceed today's standard.
Yeah, Woodhaven, but there are some out there that have extra capacity that we're going to give them extra credit for that, but Woodhaven would not be part of it.
Yeah, I guess what I was thinking is if you're only holding a half an inch of water on site and the majority of rainfalls in Florida are less than an inch, there's plenty of times where that particular site is discharging into our system without any treatment and rely on our system, where other systems that meet the twenty-five year, twenty-four hour storm, a one-inch event isn't going to produce any discharge.
Right.
And therefore, the credit should be reflected in that. Wet ponds that are listed up there, if they are, are we talking about like commercial borrow pit operations?
No, I guess, let me, let me tell you what, how the issue came up, is that, you know, we do have the residential areas that have the pond, which is a little lake, and they put the houses all the way around it. Okay? Going to that homeowners association and say, we're going to charge you a fee for your pond, people are not going to understand why they're getting charged for their pond. And so, those, that was the target. That was the area that, just from a practical user standpoint, how do you explain that someone out there gets a wetland credit but, or flood credit and our property's flooded year-round and we get no credit and it's just from a common sense standpoint? I can't explain that. So, then you start getting into borrow pits and those things and yeah, they would probably fit into that category, but that really wasn't the target.
Okay, yeah, because a lot of borrow pit operations, it's maybe direct rainfall stays in the pit, but most of the time the ground is sloped away. You don't want to be managing your water twice is, then if it slopes away, it comes to us, so.
Yeah, I know, but hopefully you understand at least, part of, you know, any ordinance, if it makes no sense to the end user, it usually, it just ends up being a battle all the time.
The level of service, when we give a credit for these existing residential areas like you were discussing, I'm always concerned that the homeowners associations are collecting enough of their dues to make sure that the system is being operated and maintained to levels necessary to the original permit. Will we be looking at that level of service and giving this credit?
We had a lot of discussion about this. First of all, if it's privately owned, they're required to maintain it, obviously. We don't go in and maintain it. What we have happen, and not just here, but very common, is that homeowners associations do just fine until the big ticket item hits. And that big ticket item is when the pipe fails or they have to dredge the pond and they find out that that's hundreds of thousands of dollars and they've got fifty homeowners and they can't afford it. So, they immediately turn to usually the local government and say, oh, you need to come fix our system, but in the meantime, you haven't been paying any of the fees, but I pay taxes. Well, but the rest of the community pays taxes and fees and so then that becomes a real concern. But in the meantime, how do you charge them a fee for a system that we don't maintain and they keep the algae and the stuff from growing in the ponds and those type of things? We, if it's totally private and they are maintaining it, then we do not charge, our proposal is they wouldn't get charged a fee. Now, a lot of them, Arlington is probably a good example, those are public streets. The pipes in those streets are on our right of way and we maintain those pipes. So, they may maintain the pond, but the streets and the system in the street maintain the same as all the other quarter acre lots in town and so they will get the same, they will have to pay the fee. They may get a twenty-three percent discount because they detain water on their property and therefore they, you know, would receive that discount, but just because they maintain the pond, we maintain the pipes, the swell system in the streets, just like we do other places. So, the, that was a roundabout way of saying that we would charge them for the system that we maintain. If we don't maintain it, we cannot charge them. That's the basic principle of fee. There is a huge, huge risk out there that they're going to come to the city in thirty years and say, our pipes need to be replaced and we can't afford it. It's the same reason why private streets have gone on the wayside. Private streets are great, except the developer doesn't have to meet the public standards, they fall apart sooner and then the homeowners can't afford to rebuild their streets. Unlike, I want to stress, Grand Haven, that is not just a homeowner association, but actually has a community development district. And community development districts are quasi-governmental district that they actually collect property taxes to maintain that system. So, in that case, there's a good argument that they are taxing themselves more to maintain the system and it's those, those taxes, those fees that they collect on the property tax that we have a whole lot more assurance that they're going to have the necessary funds long-term. And they have a mechanism to increase those and decrease those as needed based on their board of directors. So, if you have a CDD, then, then you have a whole different ability and whatever the CDD is maintaining, and they actually have, you know, it says they're maintaining it, that's what they're collecting taxes for, that wouldn't be appropriate for the city to continue to pay the fees. I mean, that sounded long. I probably have had at least a half a dozen hours worth of conversation on those very issues and during the last couple of years. It is, it is a very difficult, complicated issue to try to be fair to everybody.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor, that's pretty much it for my specific questions to staff.
Mr. Lewis?
Just one, one or two things. Not having the technical capacity that Frank has with respect to this particular subject matter, I think you can tell from the shift in the discussion where we were initially talking about water, drops of water, to where we're talking about now, how much do I pay? How much credit do I get? So, I think it's apparent that we've shifted from that very negative discussion to one that's more positive. I think perhaps there might be further discussions when we get down to the credits that's going to be given. Because I'm, I'm looking at one, one example that's, that's given here in the, I guess this is the consultant's book on page thirty-five and I would have to assume that the average bulk landowner, landowner or whomever will be able to sit down with staff and whether we're talking about reduced service or we're talking about extra, extra onsite detention or mitigation credits for community-wide drain system, there'll be somebody on staff that will be able to, to relate to the particular landowner exactly what his understanding or her understanding is with respect to those, those credits. I don't know if staff is.
The, and that is a change in what we're proposing, that the idea is that initially, we will try to determine what the credits are, that being city staff. We may need some, some technical help from the experts on consulting firm, but the idea is that city staff will attempt to determine that. So, yes, we are the ones that will come up with that original. Then we will send that to the property owner and if the property owner has additional information or their engineers disagree, then we would, city staff and their experts sit down and try to, try to work it out. If they don't, the appeal comes to me, is the way the process works. Some of it could be real easy as far as just a document. Well, we didn't know you had an easement on the property and, you know, here it is and then those would be fairly easy. Others, if you're getting into these calculations, stormwater calculations are not easy and then that's where it becomes interesting, but very engineer oriented. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Mrs. DiStefano.
I'd like to go to the screen where we talk about the seventy, seventy-five, ninety-eight percent. Thank you. With all the technical issues that have been raised, I think the bottom line today is, will, will these property owners pay and what, what percentage? I think the bottom line today is, will, will these property owners pay and what, what percentage? I believe that we need to look at the last column of 98% credit. And the issue that I have is that on, if we gave a 98% credit and the stakeholders would be acceptable to that, we could solve this issue. However, I do not want to see the residential unit raised from $8 to $9.13. And so therefore, I've, I guess I have a question that if you're going to have income from the bulk land, which you never had before, why is it necessary to raise the residential? If you had a budget of 5.4 currently, with an $8 residential and nothing from the bulk land, if you're going to get more money, a few dollars from the bulk land, why do you need to increase the residential? And the second part of that question or statement is, if you do have to, why can't you look at the budget to reduce the budget and keep it at 5.4 million? And not raise the residential? This is not a time to raise anything. Taxes, impact fees, residential fees, this is not the time. And I'll go back to the original statement. Will the stakeholders accept the 98% reduction? If the answer is yes, then we can move on.
Let the, I think there's three parts there. First of all, I tried to explain it right up front. That the reason why, if you start charging people who haven't paid in the past, it's still, your revenue goes down, is because of the middle category there of those three categories, that we have many, many properties right now that will get credits. And the fact of it is, is that, you know, I keep using Grand Haven as an example. Grand Haven's going to pay zero from now on because they're not using our system. Almost all of your new developments, Town Center. What's interesting is that the Town Center owner is a lot, is also the owner of many of these large tracts. Town Center's fees are, and they're a large chunk of our revenue, is going down substantially, potentially close to zero. And so it's one of those where, yes, everybody likes to be treated fairly and have it come down because I'm not using the same level, but those that are getting a free ride today don't want to have to start paying for the amount that they're using. Secondly is, I've heard the conversation about the budget. You know, and I, we've been extremely successful in cutting a lot of things to keep the tax rate the same, to keep, you know, the utility rates haven't gone up recently, including stormwater. And I can tell you that stormwater took a, an engineering, it was probably the one department that, from an administrative standpoint, we almost gutted. I think we were up to, had 22 employees and now we're down to nine. Now, that was engineering and inspections and those type of things. We also shifted a great deal of the operation from an inefficient, old-fashioned, inefficient of all these contractors out there, and they were charged us by linear foot, and every time somebody says, "Oh, come across and do mine," that would, you know, so we blew the budget. So we have reduced the budget substantially, but we have increased the amount of swell work we've done. If you decrease this budget, other than a couple of dollars here, a couple of dollars there, the only way you're going to make a significant impact on this stormwater budget is to reduce a crew. You can't reduce one person on the crew because it takes so many people to, you know, you've got to have somebody operating the backhoe while somebody else is operating the truck and et cetera. And that would be a decision that city council could make. But also, if you look at your goals and what you hear out in the community, if there's one thing, when I go out and speak to neighborhoods, if there's one thing that they want more than anything else is for the swell system to be improved and upgraded. And we have shifted resources to that priority and made a huge impact, in my opinion. We are getting many, many miles done. It'd be the equivalent of our street overlay program. You could say, "Let's take a look at our street overlay budget." Well, our street overlay budget is a one-time bid, and if you reduce your street overlay budget, the only way you can actually reduce that is reduce the 50 miles we do every year. The only way you're going to reduce your stormwater budget significantly by the kind of dollars we're talking here is to eliminate a crew. There's a lot of side effects of that in addition to not just getting the work done that people are demanding, but then that equipment is, is sitting there idle, et cetera. So it is, it is a, it would be a major, not just reduction in service, but really a major change and shift into the emphasis we've put into our swell system and our canal system the last couple of years. The, when you say, the last issue I heard was the 98%, would they accept it? The main property owners who have threatened to sue the city if we move forward, I believe they would accept it, based on what they've told us. Is that all property owners that object to this? Absolutely not. I mean, there's not one representative out there for all your major property owners that may or may not accept the 98%. And 98%, 100%, you know, that is, that is an option. Once again, if you want a.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, 100% is where we are at this moment?
For most of them, not all of them. Once again, let me try to, you know, this, there are equivalent of 3,400 ERUs that those people are paying today. Those people would stop paying if you go 100%. Some of them, you know, I don't have, because it's all about plating, and there are people who platted but didn't actually move forward and develop. If you platted and developed, in other words, you put in the infrastructure, you would still end up.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Moore?
I have a question. If we did the 98% and kept the individual parcel rate at $8, what would that do to the bottom line on the budget? Where would that put us?
Well, that.
Ray, you're going to have to help.
I just figured a calculation here, that if you increase $113, it's 332,220.
So basically, Ray, you would take $8 times the 49, 708?
Yeah, well, I mean, basically, a dollar gets you just under 600,000. So $113, you would be around $700,000 that you would.
Why would you take the 29, 4, a single family that's paying $8?
No, it's.
Well, you've got 5.4 million, they're divided by eight bucks. That's about, almost 700,000 per dollar.
No, I took 29, 4 multiplied by $113. You're increasing $113.
Well, that's, okay, it's just on the residential, but if you're, if you're raising, well, you're basically doing away with a lot more ERUs there.
See, the key to it is, it's not just residential, it's residential equivalent. But if you increase it a dollar, all of your commercial is also increased by a dollar per ERU, so, and then the ERU depends on how much hard surface versus soft surface, all of that changes. So it's not just residential, it's residential equivalency. So what you have to do is take the, the total ERUs, which is 49, 708, we can do that real quick, times eight, times 12. And what you come up with on that is 4,772,000. So as Ray said, in a different way, that's about $700,000 is, is what the decrease in your budget would be.
And that amounts to about one crew?
Uh, at least, probably more than a crew.
Which also means you're coming in at less than your 25 miles a year.
We're actually over 25 miles right now.
I mean, but if you drop that.
Yeah. Once again, it's not just the 25 miles, it's our commitment that we would get to every complaint within six months. If you recall, at one point, we were telling, in 2010, we'd see them in 2012. We now are, do no more than a six-month turnaround and usually quite a bit less than that. But that's because we've added crews instead of having to go out and contract. That, that's the impact on this. I don't have, you say, you know, tighten your budget. There isn't $700,000 of administrative cost in this. This is, this is very boots-on-the-ground type operation that if you want to make budget cuts, you're going to have to change what people see out on the street in this budget.
Ray, I have a question. I don't know if you're the correct one to ask or Jones Edwards. Clearly, an alternative is to simply do away with the stormwater utility, do this as a municipal service and pay for it out of ad valorem taxes. How many cities, counties, stormwater, how many providers of stormwater do it that way? Do you have any idea?
I really, I don't know how many. I know there are some out there, but.
Because if, were you to do that, and I'm not proposing it because I haven't thought through the consequences, everybody would be paying. All this discussion about, does it run off, doesn't it run off? Do you use my canal? That issue goes away. If you pay taxes, you pay.
And actually, what you're seeing is with the restrictions on the millage rate that have been imposed by the state and by constitutional amendments and stuff, more, you, you actually see more cities beginning to put in a stormwater fee. So even though there is, there are those out there that still do, included in their property taxes, more and more are actually moving away from that to an actual stormwater fee. And not just in the state of Florida, I've been reading it, you know, from all over the country, seeing that, that movement in that direction.
Okay, thank you. Other council questions? I'm going to propose, before we open the meeting to public, that we take a five-minute recess, if that's okay?
Oh, yeah.
And then we'll have public questions, comments, when we reconvene. Okay, let's reconvene the meeting, and at this point, we're prepared to open the meeting for public comment on agenda item number two. Please give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Charlie Erickson, Palm Coast. Just a couple of numbers I didn't hear mentioned. What is the city's liability if we go back to April of oh eight and issue refunds, or if we go back even earlier to the inception date? And also, are these, would these be credits toward other city services, or actual refunds to the property owners? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Tom Lawrence, I live in Grand Haven. This morning, I'm representing the Grand Haven residents and the Grand Haven CDD. I have a couple of points. Number one, it was mentioned that any credit will go back to either the HOA, or I guess the CDD. We think that's not the proper way to do it, because we don't have a record of who lived there, when. You have the database because you collected the money, nor are we sure we have a legal right to that money. So we would prefer that the credits go back to the people who actually paid them. And also, that they be, not, I'm sorry, not credits, but refunds, not credits. My second point is, it appears to us that the four years, that the April eighth date is an arbitrary date. If we joined in a lawsuit, it would be probably statute of limitations. And I can tell you, both the homeowner association and the CDD have been consulting with their attorney about the wisdom of joining in a lawsuit. So I would hope that issue could be made to go away by you agreeing to a four-year time of rebate. And my third comment is, we understand how difficult sorting through the bulk land issue is, both from a technical point of view and a legal point of view. Several meetings ago, Councilman Meeker suggested that if you can't resolve the bulk land, that maybe you should put that on hold, and have an ordinance that addresses the rest of the system. And so I would suggest you reconsider that if you can't reach closure on bulk land. So at least the homeowners in Grand Haven community, who have been paying and paying, and not gotten any rebate, could be taken care of. And my third, my last comment is, I would hope you would, after public hearing, make some comments on what I've said. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Clint Smith of Palm Coast Holdings. I want to address just a couple of things we've heard today. First, I want to address the KLOP canal capacity that was talked about. First of all, the KLOP was done in the mid-seventies, I think it was published in nineteen seventy-eight. And the world of stormwater has changed drastically since those days. Not only the world of stormwater, but in the seventies, you could routinely impact wetlands, and I'm sure that was assumed in those calculations, which you can't do now. And those wetlands all create storage on-site, which wouldn't have been accounted for. And the days of free discharge are gone. In the seventies, you just let her go. That's pretty much the system that was in place. That all changed mostly in the early eighties with the water management district. Now, for large projects, as Frank talked about, your discharge is limited. And now there are new rules being proposed, or actually, I guess are in effect, with the EPA, they're going to further limit your discharge. So that capacity, whether it was there or not, can never be realized. Then I want to harp one more time on undisturbed land. Your ordinance doesn't address undisturbed land. It creates vacant land, as any land that doesn't have impervious surface on it. And all the ordinances that we've looked at, undisturbed land is exempt or excluded, or at the most, is charged a de minimis fee. You don't have that in your ordinance. I think you kind of talked about that today with the ninety-eight percent. That would be considered a de minimis fee. And last, I just have to say this, but when the chart was up there, there's one big missing piece in the calculations in the ERUs, and that's the city road system. It's exempt. You know how many ERUs are in the city road system? Thousands. But it's not up there at all. So that doesn't quite seem fair. Seems to me that the road system is probably the biggest user of the system in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. Jim Wolverton from Livingston Wolverton in Sword. We represent Palm Coast Holdings. One thing that we haven't seen a lot in this dialogue is a lot of dialogue with the city's attorney's office. We had prepared a memo back in two thousand and ten of July, if you pull the minutes from that date. It states that Mary DiStefano asked that the legal department get together with Mr. Livingston, the stakeholders and staff, and see how and if and when we need to amend the ordinance. She doesn't want to pass an ordinance and find the city in a lawsuit. Mayor Nets would like an analysis of everything heard today by staff and legal. Mr. Landon stated that Mr. Livingston's legal brief was reviewed by our legal counsel. We have not seen that review. We haven't had any dialogue with the city's attorneys directly. Obviously, that's something we'd like to do. What we have seen is a distinguish, a distinguishment between the controlling case law on this issue, which is the Gainesville case. The Gainesville case came out in two thousand and three. It stated that the need for a stormwater system is because rain does not create the need for a stormwater system. Rather, the need is created by impervious area, which prevents the rain from percolating into the ground. Ultimately, in that ordinance which was upheld, there was no fee charged for the properties that did not use the system, particularly properties that retain all stormwater on-site and undeveloped properties. You do not exempt undeveloped properties in your ordinance, and you're walking into some murky legal waters, which we haven't seen the legal justification for why that's okay. Yes, you can do a de minimis hookup fee, which we agree with utilities has been upheld, but we haven't seen the justification for where you're coming up with this de minimis number, which you're attempting to charge in the current ordinance as written. Also, the current ordinance as written does not have a definition of vacant bulk lands. It only has vacant lands. So we'd want to review, we would request that you review that ordinance, see what it really says in that ordinance. And the other issue that we have some issues with, that we think legally are getting into some of the problems where the court's going to overturn a case based on arbitrariness, would be your date of April of two thousand and eight for capping a sort of refund. What you have to realize, what you did when you originally passed a stormwater ordinance, is you passed an illegal ordinance. You were charging an illegal fee to people that lived in Palm Coast. By retroactively applying this ordinance, which you're trying to fix that ordinance, is you're trying to fix that illegal fee. There's never been a case on point that I've seen that says you can cap, giving, retroactively protecting yourself by some date in which you were put on notice. What you can do is fix in a retroactive ordinance, through retroactive ordinance, something all the way back. What you're doing here is you're kind of taking it back to April two thousand and eight, but what happened before April two thousand and eight is you were improperly charging people. What are you doing for that gap between the original passage of the ordinance to April two thousand and eight? That's up in the air, and that's still an illegal charge, one way or the other, and it's the city's job to work within the law and within the parameters the Supreme Court has laid out for charging people taxes and utility fees. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Charlie Faulkner. One of the things that I'd like to start with is the term of free ride, as it relates to undeveloped land. There is no free ride. In fact, there is no ride. And that's a big erroneous place to start. For the benefit of you as councilpeople, you need to know that you and Star Trek are going places where men have never been before. All right? I think that is really, really important. I've probably personally read about sixty-five stormwater utility fee ordinances. None of them even come close to doing what this ordinance would do to undeveloped land. The city of Bartos probably comes the closest. The city of Bartos ordinance is real simple. If you have a parcel of undeveloped land, pine trees growing, anything less than twenty-five acres, you pay about eleven dollars a year for that parcel. That's a quarter of an ERU. Their ERUs are forty-five bucks. If you have a parcel of land greater than fifty acres, you pay a full ERU. That's forty-five dollars a year for a parcel, even if it's three hundred acres. That is de minimis. This ordinance proposes to charge eighty-five dollars an acre, and the great majority of the time, that's more than the city's share of the taxes. That's why landowners are pretty upset right now. For a year, we've been asking, we're told, we're benefited, we undeveloped lands are benefited. For a year, we've been asking, how? Explain it to us. Nobody's even attempted to answer. And I believe there is no answer, because there is no benefit. I'm looking right now at a presentation that your attorney put together on September twenty-eighth last year. He defines a stormwater system, he talks about assessing it, and this is right out of the state statutes. The fee needs to be based on the relative contribution to the need of the system. Ladies and gentlemen, pine trees don't need this system. They don't contribute to the need for this system, a man-made, maintained system. They don't need it. They didn't need it fifty years ago, or a thousand years ago. That is what the legislature said you need to set fees based on. It also talks about, it should be a typical utility, like water and wastewater. With a water system, you can choose to take a shorter shower. You can catch rainwater and use it. You can irrigate your yard less. You have control over that fee, based on your use. Us, we don't. The Gainesville case, again, as it relates to setting fees, the amount of the fee needs to be relative to the value or the benefit of the service. There is no benefit. It also says, when you're setting it, is the fee voluntary? That is, whether, and this is from your attorney, that is, whether property owners can avoid the fee by refusing service. We can't, we've got no choice. It's not voluntary.
Fifteen seconds, please.
So I would ask, if you saw the Super Bowl and they talked about the Constitution, they talked about inalienable rights for freedom and happiness. There's also inalienable rights to breathe air without the government charging you. And there should be a right for a piece of property to drain when it rains real hard without the government charging you for that. I would ask that you not pass this ordinance today, as long as that provision is in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. Jason D. Lorenzo, Flagler Home Builders Association. In a few weeks, we're going to have a countywide economic development summit. One of the commonly agreed-to concerns we have in this county is the high cost of land, the high cost of vacant land. This proposal is going to add additional heavy costs to those already high land costs, only contributing to the problem for land that has no benefit to the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Jack Carroll from Palm Coast. This reduction that you want to give these people should be, well, first of all, let me say this, this ordinance is not for Palm Coast. This ordinance is for large lot owners. Because you're not putting me into their category. You're not saying, well, everybody should benefit from this. You're saying only people with large holdings are benefiting, or they should benefit, or they shouldn't benefit. But the little guy, the little guy that sits around with a third of an acre, has no say. You're not doing anything for him. This doesn't apply to him at all, because it doesn't adjust his rates, and it doesn't adjust his usage. Now, as far as usage goes, I brought this up to you before. We had a rainstorm, I had no runoff. So I shouldn't pay the full price, because I'm not getting the benefit, the full benefit from what you people are doing. Now, I should get the reduced price, like they do. If you go to the one hundred or ninety-eight percent, that's going to raise my taxes. So I'm supporting the big, the guys that held all the land. So now, this is what they call welfare. This is welfare from the poor to the rich. Now, it comes down to the same thing, do use my benefit. Let me say this. A person living on Carrot Street has absolutely no use for Palm Harbor Parkway. You probably never see, probably never even heard of it. But you're using his money to pave, to put streetlights. So he's getting nothing but paying. So it comes down to the same thing. If it's there, pay for it. You're going to use it in the future, we're paying for it, let them pay for it. The same rate that I'm paying.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. So you know when approached the podium, we closed the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. Let's see if we can answer some of the questions that have been raised. And I guess this is from Mr. Britt. Do we have any numbers on the extent of the liability were we to give a credit back to two thousand and eight? And are we proposing a refund or a credit against future costs?
First part of that question, no, I do not have a exact number, because the ordinance has been moving around so much, so trying to come up with a number at this point, you know, would have just been futile, I guess. As far as the refunds, I mean, that's something that we would need to take a look at. I believe that had to do with Mr. Lawrence's comments, Grand Haven being the biggest one that that would be affect. We were talking about just refunding the money to the homeowners association or the CDD, letting them use that to maintain the system and reduce fees to the current residents. He talks about the people that actually paid it should get that refund. You know, that will be problematic. We will have to, you know, look at that, because some of those people moved away, and we do not know where those people are at this point in time. Alls we had was their address here, and maybe the address that they moved to when they left in order to send them a final bill, but they may have moved again, for all we know. So that one's going to be a little more difficult to deal with, but that's just one of those details that we'll still have to work out.
I can add to that, we've talked about a refund versus a credit. And if people want a refund, I think it'd be appropriate, we're going to write the check. However, they would just like us to give them a credit, then we could do that, you know. So that will be something that probably the easiest thing is going to be the refund. Most people are going to want that.
Where did, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Then there was a question, and I guess this is for Mr. Reichman. We have, according to one or more speakers, arbitrarily picked April of two thousand and eight as a date for a refund. Can you comment on the legality of selecting that arbitrary date, rather than going back to the inception of the stormwater ordinance? Or the obligation to provide a refund at all?
Sure. And as your city manager indicated, I guess arbitrary is in the eye of the beholder. The date certainly just wasn't pulled out of the air. It was a date that the city received notification from some of the folks that are represented here by the various speakers. As your city manager indicated, this is discretionary for the city council, from an equitable standpoint, whether you wish to give this rebate. The date that was provided was based upon an understanding that was reached back in April of two thousand and eight, some deference that was given by the parties that contacted the city. So certainly, within your discretion, to respond to the allegations and charges and demands that are being made, whether you want to take it back to two thousand and four versus two thousand and eight, it's more of a business decision, whether or not you want to eliminate any risk of the claims that are being made. But it is our legal opinion that this is... But it is our legal opinion that this is something that is discretionary on your behalf.
I guess most of the rest of it was comment, rather than question. Council, did you hear any questions that we haven't answered? Mrs. DiStefano?
Not a question, but yeah, I guess it's a question of Mr. Landon or Mr. Britt. Who wrote the check to the city for Grand Haven? Individuals or the CDD?
The Grand Haven area, like any other residential, it was an $8 charge on each one of their utility bills.
So the check came from CDD?
No, no. When they paid their utility, each individual property owner, customer.
So then?
Yeah, so there is a check from the homeowner association or CDD for the common area, the clubhouse, those. So whoever paid the utility bill paid, because it was on the utility bill, just like, you know, everybody else's.
So then the check should go back to the individual, as opposed to CDD?
Well, you know, that's, once again, there's a lot of inherent problems with that. Our idea was, is to the homeowner association or the CDD then could actually reduce, hopefully they're going to reduce their fees to people as a result of that check. But if we end up sending it to individuals, as Mr. Britt's already said, we will get, it's amazing how much return mail you get when you try to go back two or three years. In some ways, we thought this would actually be more beneficial to the neighborhood. But if they are objecting to it, and they don't want us to write them that check, that makes it pretty easy. We will be happy to send them out to individual, and if it comes back to us, then it comes back to us.
Okay.
You know, that's, that one's not worth fighting about.
Okay.
Council questions or comments? Mr. Lewis?
None.
Mr. Norman?
No, sir.
Mrs. DiStefano?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Meeker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In my mind, the main argument that we're spending a lot of time on here is the one about, is there a reduced level of service, and should it equate to a reduced fee? And I think we're all in agreement that a reduced level of service should equate to a reduced fee. In thinking about, I was thinking back to the argument about the fire station. If we were to, you know, even if we're not using the fire station, we're certainly glad it's there, and there's no doubt about that. But this is a little bit different, because what we're saying here is, the use that we're trying to get these guys to pay for is a use that occurs, on average, once every 25 years. If I was to have a fire department that I used once every 25 years, I may rethink the way I fund it in my general fund for that specific reason. I may have, I may reduce the number of stations, or I may shift things around, or do other things. But the plain fact of the matter is, we do get a lot of use out of the fire department. We do get a lot of use out of the water and sewer utility. And those areas, within the developed areas of Palm Coast, again, in my mind, that, those 42,000 acres of developed lots, all receive that benefit. And the benefit is one of direct runoff, which kind of gets to Jack's question. In urbanized areas, or residential areas, as far as that goes, in my mind, both of those areas meet the test of use and benefit. It's not because of the density of the roofs. It's not because of the amount of impervious surface. It's because whatever is placed on that lot, everything has been graded to drain, to the swales out front, and in excess rainfall events actually flow down the streets, which is also part of the system. And the water is conveyed off-site, so the home doesn't flood. And for that very reason, anything in those developed areas that has been graded and adjusted that way receives a direct benefit. In my mind, vacant properties that have not changed since the continental United States split off from Eurasia, you know, millions of years ago, I don't see any major changes there. Now, my biggest problem with the ordinance is that, while we talk about use and benefit, we don't define either. And I'm a little uncomfortable with that, so I'll just, I'll leave that out there. My preference would be, I would still like to move forward. There's been a lot of good changes made to this ordinance. The staff has worked very hard to correct those changes. I kind of suggest that we move forward, and with the ordinance, and leave this, leave a section in there for a reservation of capacity of service, or just flat outright exempt vacant bulk lands in their undeveloped state by policy of the board.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir, that'll be my motion.
So your motion is to?
Move forward with the ordinance, exempting outright vacant bulk lands from the ordinance. Oh, wait a minute, sorry. There is one other thing. And it was brought up earlier, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. It goes back to the funding chart. In doing what I proposed, I can't meet the $5.4 million test. Not without raising the rates all the way across. And I agree with Marion and a rest, and a number of other people, that raising user fees at this time is just not advisable. So I guess what I'd be looking for is a
Reduction in service.
A reduction in service in those areas. With the idea that we have spent a lot of time and effort over the last two years catching up on all those areas that we've, that were causing us problems. And maybe we can afford to slow it down just a little bit, and reduce that level of service. In a similar argument with, we have paved and repaved the roads. You guys have led the fight on that for years, on the half-cent sales tax. And we have, you know, a phenomenal system that has gone into effect to repave roads that had grass growing through them and asphalt falling apart. When I drive around the area, I see that we're kind of like catching up in those areas, and I may not have to be quite as aggressive on some of that stuff. So it goes to the same point here. John and his staff and the public works folks have made tremendous efforts in addressing the most critical areas. I might be able to reduce things back a little bit, throttle it back a little bit, let more homes come online, let more things develop along, and get out of this argument of use and benefit on lands that are, again, in a natural state.
Discussion on the motion. First of all, is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? The motion dies for lack of a second. An emotion or a discussion?
Discussion.
Okay.
I'd like to ask Mr. Meeker, are you saying no fee, or are you going to introduce a reservation fee?
I'd like to come back with the reservation fee, but it's not going to make up the shortfall in what we're talking about. You know, going from $5.4 million down to something else. That's, Jim, I'm sorry, the number you were talking about was almost $700,000, right?
Right.
A reservation fee is not going to cover that.
I need a little more discussion. I'm not sure what the idea of reservation fee is. It's, in essence, what we proposed. Help?
Well, I have a problem, I have a problem amending this ordinance with no fee attached. And I think that's what Mr. Meeker was trying to do. I think the bulk lands should pay a fee, but what fee they should pay, I thought was satisfactory in the 95% to 98%. I just can't support no fee, because I think it's been explained after many, many hours that they would benefit, should they develop the land. And if that is so, then I think there should be a fee attached to that.
If you, and the whole idea is, is that that's what, I think what staff is trying to do exactly, which I'm hearing, as far as reservation fee. You know, once you take the 70%, and then you take 60% of that, you're in that 90%, particularly if you're outside the club, then you're in that 90%
90% range.
Range. And what we were trying to do is actually give you a mechanism to say, this is how we got to that figure, versus just an arbitrary number that is in that kind of 90% range, but they pay some, if that's what the city council wants to do. And I can assure you that the ordinance will show it as a reservation-type fee, because that's really what it is at that point, is we're not charging you for much of anything other than the fact that you have this available for you, particularly the benefit will come later.
Question for the attorney. The motion or the ordinance that's before us now, what do we have to plug in to pass that ordinance? And what is determined later by resolution? In other words, let us suppose that we can find consensus on some sort of a reservation fee in the 90-plus percent area. That would be part of the ordinance. Does the passage of this ordinance today have to incorporate the ERU payment amount, eight, nine, 10, four, six? Or is that done by resolution later?
From a legal standpoint, you could pass this, you could create and pass an ordinance that would, that would allow the ordinance to be amended by resolution. I do not believe that that is currently how it is, how it is set up, that the ERU
The reason I raise the question, and this goes back to one of the first questions from the public, if we go with a de minimis reservation fee, we don't know what our shortfall is going to be, because we don't know how many additional non-payments are going to be. We don't know to what extent we'll have to reduce services. And I think at some point, council is going to have to address that issue. How much of reduction in service are you willing to have, versus how much an increase in your ERU fee? So I'm just trying to determine what we can do today, if anything, versus how we can then deal with the perhaps unintended or intended consequences at a later date.
Well, you're right. You have three variables. You have three variables that we're talking about today. One is the amount of, the rate, the amount that you're going to give credit for, how much you're going to charge for the vacant bulk lands, or whatever you want to call them. That's variable number one. Variable number two is, what is the amount for a standard off-the-shelf ERU? And then the third variable is, what's the level of service? The ordinance currently, obviously, does not speak to the level of service that's in your budget. The ordinance does currently speak to the specific amounts of credits that would be given to the bulk land, and the ordinance does currently speak to the amount charged for a standard ERU. No? Okay, then I'm going to need the city manager to help here.
Yeah, the resolution coming back to you, and if you
I'm sorry, Mayor.
You look here, the rate says it will be set by resolution.
That was my question.
Okay. I'm sorry.
The resolution, I believe, the only thing I can think of right now, and it will come back to you on your second reading, that's what we always do, so you can see what that is. It will, just, our proposal will be $8 for an ERU. Okay? And then there will be a $60 deposit for the appeals we talked about. I believe those are the only two rates you're going to see in that resolution. The, all these other things, as far as how you get a credit and how it's exempt, that's in the ordinance that affects how we calculate. In other words, first half to do is come up with how many ERUs your property has associated with it, if you will. And then we take that figure times eight, times 12, and that's your annual amount. This deals with ERUs, and so bill's correct, it's just you have to set that $8 figure. With this whole two-year process, we've used $8 in that whole discussion, and don't plan on bringing anything else to you but the $8. Otherwise, this thing becomes a whole different issue. Later on, at budget time, if $8 is, the ERUs are reduced to the point where $8 reduces our revenue by $700,000, then at budget time, you've got reduce staffing levels, or
Here comes more government layoffs.
Yeah, or increase the dollar free, or increase that $8 to $9.
Or shift money from somewhere else in the budget.
Or don't mow 25, mow 20. Or dig 20 instead of 25 or something, yeah.
Mrs. DiStefano? You had the floor before we
Mr. Landon or Mr. Reichman? If this ordinance is passed, are we referring to 7.0, which says a summary of proposed rate structure? And if we pass this today on the first reading, is that the structure we will use when we set up a resolution for fees?
No. Well, first of all, right now, it says 70%. What
Well, if you would look at that, I don't, oh, okay, down at the, on number E, reduced fee, okay.
Yeah. And what we're looking for is, I don't think, well, I shouldn't say what, if you want, as a council, to change that figure, then tell us what you would like us to bring back, is what the game plan here is, and we will plug in a new figure. And we will, if you are headed towards, and hopefully agree with the reservation-type concept, then you will see language in here, and the technical report to reflect the fact that it's more of a reservation fee than just a use fee.
Well, then, in that case, we need, I believe council needs to either agree or disagree if item E, reduced fee by 70%. And I had suggested earlier 98. I would go, you know, as low as 95. But there has to, we have to set that up before we can pass this ordinance.
Yeah, that, the, that figure will be in there. So give us that direction. It's easier if you can agree today, let's plug it in, we bring it back, and then it's consistent with your direction. Or we can not agree today, and we bring it back, and you all, but you have to agree on that number. Three of you have to agree on a number in order to get the ordinance passed.
And if the motion
I don't, excuse me.
Am I still on the floor?
Well, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, sir, I am. I would like to move that we reduce the fee by 95%.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, just from a procedural standpoint, the way that this would be is that we're, that's really a motion to amend the ordinance.
That's fine. Discussion on the amended motion setting the reduction fees at 95%? Mr. Lewis?
Yes, I'm not in favor of that, primarily because we're looking at a couple of things here. One of the benefits of living in this country is that you have the right to die for it. And one of the benefits for living in Palm Coast is the quality of life. Now, anything we do in this town to maintain this particular quality of life costs money. The swales, we maintain the swales, or we don't maintain the swales. If you don't maintain the swale, the quality of life drops, and we get, we get the usual complaints from the residents. They're paying for something that they're not, they're not getting. Before, before we had civilizations, you know, we just had running around in open country and that sort of thing, and didn't have to worry about swales, or canals, or anything, just let them do what they have to do. But the moment you put up a fort, you know, you're blocking off something. When you build a city, you're also blocking off something. But everyone wants to benefit from what that city offers. I don't think that reducing the fee by that percentage amount is going to maintain the type of city that we want to maintain. I don't think that we should burden the people who have the large land holdings with excessive cost. But I think that there is a contribution that we all have to make, and whatever that number is, I don't have at the moment, and I'm not ready to vote on that number yet. But I do think that we have to realize that there is a cost for living anywhere you live today in this, in these United States. And you have to, you know, nobody wants to pay anything. And you, you have to, you know, nobody wants to pay anything, but you have to pay something. What it is, let's, let's, let's deal with that.
The, I hear, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Lewis, and I go back to the, the point of use and benefit, and a reduced level of service is required if you have a, or a reduced fee, I should say, is required if you have a reduced level of service. What I really hear in my mind, again, is that we don't really want to increase the $8 fee in those, the heavily developed areas of the city. I really shouldn't be so stupid as to say something like this, but two years ago, I remember having this discussion with the council, and at that time, it was my recommendation because of the, of the needed stormwater improvements that we saw were out there, I wanted to take the fee up from $8 to $10, an increase of $2 per month. I can understand why we were reluctant to do that. But to take that need from those people who specifically benefited and throw that dollar cost out on somebody else that does not receive that same level of benefit just doesn't seem right to me.
I think the, the argument that I heard about pine trees don't receive a benefit, as I recall, that's reductio ad absurdum. You're, you're making a ridiculous case. The fact of the matter is that this vacant land has value, and that value is enhanced by its adjacent position to the city of Palm Coast. If we are going to reduce our level of services in our city, or if we're going to require that the homeowners pay more for the same level of service, that is going to diminish our quality of life. That is going to diminish the value of those lands. There is an inherent value in being adjacent to a city that has not the flooding problems that we've seen in Deltona and Deland. Besides the fact, use and benefit, and I've asked this question, I've tried to make this distinction several times, use and benefit are not necessarily synonymous. You may argue that the pine trees don't derive a benefit, but the reality is, if water flows into our system, it is using our system, not the pine trees, but the landowner. So I, I would be perfectly happy to, to look at a reservation fee, perfectly happy to look at a reduction commensurate with the extent to which water drains into our, into our system. But to simply say, because it's vacant, it shouldn't pay, and because they're pine trees, it shouldn't pay, that doesn't make any sense to me. Right now, we have a motion and a second to, to approve an amended ordinance with a 95%. Mrs. Stefano, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I think the, and just to clarify for the record, my understanding is, is a motion to amend, simply so all you, the, if you vote, if this motion passes, you would be just amending the existing ordinance-
Yes.
-to bring it back to 95. Then you would then vote on the ordinance as amended. I'm sorry to be technical, but just one-
Nope, nope, that's why we're paying you the big bucks.
Is it the existing ordinance, or are we talking about reducing under the table seven, or on table seven summary proposed rate structure, item E? Change that number from 70% to 95%?
That is correct. That's, that is the motion that is on the floor to reduce that number.
Motion to amend.
Correct.
Okay.
Could I explain why? I mean-
You can certainly talk in defense of your own, for sure.
Well, no, because I'm looking at as a reservation fee is what I'm looking at. That's why I went down from 70 to 95.
That is good information because what we can do is make sure the ordinance is-
Says reservation.
Reflects that.
Call the question.
Is there any other discussion on the motion to amend? On the motion to amend to seventy, at the 95% level, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Aye.
Councilmember Stefano?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
No.
Mayor, this motion is passed three to two.
Okay. Now, we have the main motion, which is the repealing of the existing stormwater ordinance and replacing with this one as amended. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve this ordinance with the amendment.
As amended?
As amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Landen, you had a question?
Just want to confirm this, so the audience knows that this is a first reading, so this isn't-
Yes, sir.
It isn't finished. There will be a second reading two weeks from, well, it's the first Tuesday in March at 6:30 PM. So the city council can still make changes to this ordinance at that time, and there's still more time for public comment, public hearing, et cetera.
Precisely the reason for my second. We need to get off the dime on this and get going.
I understand, I understand. We can't keep going where we are. So we have a motion and a second to approve the amended motion, amended ordinance. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Aye.
Councilmember Stefano?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
No.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
No.
Mayor, this motion is passed three to two.
Thank you very much. At least we've taken a step toward first base.
There's the step, yeah.
All right. Next item on our agenda, resolution approving the neighborhood stabilization plan, abbreviated action plan, Mr. Landen.
Mayor, city council, this is-
Is this easier?
Easier.
And shorter.
Much shorter.
It says abbreviated right in there.
Even though it's a planner that's going to give the presentation, I, I assure you that it's going to be a much shorter presentation. All right. Not to steal any of this thunder, but, you know, part of, one of city council's priorities, part of our prosperity 2021 to, is to stabilize our neighborhoods, try very hard to get as many of the vacant foreclosed homes back in private ownership, and that's a good thing for all of us in, in all the neighborhoods. There are a lot of progress being made, and the federal neighborhood stabilization program is something that actually is just one cog in that wheel to help. But we have been successful at this point, and the federal government has gone on to phase three, and we are eligible for that. So it takes some additional approvals by city council to move forward. Plus, we have some CDBG and some other additional dollars that we're trying to help out the neighborhoods to stabilize them, which is consistent with one of city council's priorities. Bo's going to go through this real quick. There's actually three items on your agenda, this resolution, and then two more on the consent, but the presentation will cover all of them in essence. Bo, take it from there.
Good morning, mayor and council. Just a quick overview of the current housing programs that we have, and then we'll get into the actual abbreviated action plan that's subject to your agenda item today. Once again, we've received Neighborhood Stabilization Program One, now we'll call it NSP One Funds. We met our first deadline of demonstrating 100% obligation by September of last year. And this year, our next deadline is to expend all of the grant funds. We're currently at 89% expended, and the, the national average is about 45%, so we're doing very well. And we're working with our partners, of course, at Flagler County, our consultant, and some of our developer partners as well, including a nonprofit. Just to give you a quick update, there's kind of two, two sides to the house of resale. We've had 21 buyers get qualified. We're currently in our advertising campaign to generate more interest. We've had three homes that have been purchased, renovated, and resold to an applicant, with two more currently scheduled in the coming weeks. And then we have 10 homes that have been purchased and are under rehab, and then one purchase offer that's moving towards closing. On the rental side, we have four homes that have been purchased, renovated, and are now occupied, and this portion of the program is pretty much complete except for long-term monitoring. Just a, a quick kind of advertising plug, you might see some of the advertisements around, and our website has been updated, so if there is anyone interested in applying for the program, we're still accepting the application, there's still money available. You can even go to our website at home.palmcoast.gov.com and see some of the homes that are available, pull down application, so just to give a quick plug. Your agenda item today is about the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Three Funds, and it's an abbreviated action plan. It's what we have to submit to the Department of Housing and Urban Development by March 1st. This was an additional allocation of funds through the Dodd-Frank Act of 2010, it was about $1 billion. And of course, similar purpose to NSP One, to assist the redevelopment of abandoned and foreclosed homes. And then FUDs are being distributed based on a funding formula which identified Palm Coast for funding of about $1.4 million. This will be directly from the federal government, unlike NSP One, which went through the state, so hopefully it'll be a little bit easier this time around, but I won't count on it. Some of the eligible uses, we will be basically doing acquisition rehab program. It'll be a little bit different than NSP One, we'll be doing direct purchase assistance to the homeowner. We won't be going through a developer partner, developer partner. And part of the reason that is, we have about two or three years to spend this money, whereas NSP One was about a year, so the timeline didn't make sense to do a direct purchase assistance. Once again, you have to meet the income requirements, they're here. There is a low income set aside, and that'll be the 50% of area median income. And then for the purchase side of things, the purchase resale will be 120% of AMI. Those are the current income limits for the Palm Coast MSA. The abbreviated action plan outlines the budget for the, the grant, about $900,000 to assist approximately 20 homes with the purchase assistance, and that'll be down payment assistance, also doing some rehab on the home if necessary. And then the set aside amount will be about $343,000 to purchase three homes, and those will be long-term rentals, and we'll look for a developer partner again, similar to the first program. And then, of course, program administration funds, which will pay for our grant consultant, and also portions of money to Flagler County to handle application intake. A little different, just to point out, a little different thing than NSP One is, you have to pick an area of greatest need, you have to target area, and HUD really wanted you to narrow down the area to make sure that they can show an impact. So it's a little different. And through our Citizens Advisory Task Force and in discussions with them, we narrowed it down to, this is going to be our primary area, and the scores on the left demonstrate basically the need, the number of real estate-owned properties, the starts to the foreclosure process in that area. And basically, we're looking with the money that we have, can we make an impact on our area? And this was one of the highest-ranked areas, so this will be our primary area. And then, if for some reason the market changes, we've identified some secondary areas as well. I guess I should give you a little bit of, Royal Palms Parkway is to the south, this is Bel Air, on both sides of Bel Air. And the area is right next to it, in the Rs, second area, and the third area is in the Ps along Bel Air and Whiteview. So, and in discussion with the Citizens Advisory Task Force, who have bankers and realtors, they kind of agreed with these areas as, as the most needed. So if the program runs along, and we're a year into it, and the market shifts, and the foreclosures are happening somewhere else, we can always amend our action plan. Just a couple, a few more updates. Community Development Block Grant Program, if you remember, we applied for a $750,000 housing rehab program. That would be for homeowner-occupied, typically older homes, where the home is deteriorating and the homeowner may not have funds available to repair. So it'd benefit the homeowner, the neighborhood, and our local contractors for doing the work. So just, we anticipate, once again, contracting with Flagler County, who has a housing program, grant consultant, and then local contractors for rehab. We're currently second in the scoring, in the fundable range. Awards are now expected to be announced in March, and we've already had our site visit. And that concludes my presentation. The, the other two items on your consent agenda are really minor changes to be consistent with federal law. And just to note that this is a public hearing for the NSP Three Action Plan, so if there's public comments, we would like to receive those.
Council questions? Mr. Lewis?
Bo, could you put your, your area charts back up? Yeah. Those areas are primarily in the newer parts of Palm Coast as opposed to the older areas of Palm Coast. I can't believe that there aren't any areas in the older section of Palm Coast that are not in need.
Well, the, it's kind of interesting, the, because the, the homes are older in those older areas of Palm Coast, typically the homeowner stayed in the home, where he didn't have this kind of market flippers, investors, where the bulk of the, the foreclosures happened in the, in the early days.
It might be helpful if you defined what the need criteria are.
Sure. The, the need criteria are basically, they want to see what the percentage of low, medium, low, medium, moderate income population is, and then low pop, low income population. So those are two of the percentages on the left. Then the, the real estate-owned categories are those bank-owned properties in the area, so typically an indication that-
Bank-owned property is, is-
Foreclosed.
A euphemism for foreclosed.
Foreclosed homes, correct. And then the starts are the number of list pendants or properties that are basically in the foreclosure process, in this statistical subset of data that HUD demonstrates. So basically, they want to see that you have an impact on the number of foreclosures in the area. You want to make sure there's foreclosures in the area because you can only buy foreclosed homes. And in the, what we've seen in NSP One, typically the areas are where we had, where the boom hit the biggest, is, is the areas where they had a real impact with foreclosure. So in those, those older areas of Palm Coast, the homes, they held on to the homes, they lived in them, they didn't go and flip it the next day, so there wasn't that same need for the foreclosure problem. Now, for the CB, the housing rehab grant funds, those are the areas we're targeting because they, the, the homes are older, and they need some repairs, and, and the homeowner may not be able to afford those repairs, so.
Would you say that the older homes had better advice, the older homeowners had better advice in buying their homes prior to occupying them as opposed to running into the scams and the other things that happen to people after ITT left?
Bo is your favorite city manager. I advise you not to answer that question. No, I, seriously, you know, the subprime, that, that whole era that got us into this crazy business where no down, the arm rates, you know, it was pointing the finger as to whose fault that is, I, I would like not to point it at the resident as much as the, you know, bankers, Wall Street, that whole investment arena, yes. So-
They didn't get caught up in speculation.
Yes, so-
Times were different then.
Yeah, times were different.
But it does reflect, you know, the, Mr. Lewis is correct. This is the air, the area that was being built on very, very rapidly during that era, and therefore, it's the area now with the foreclosures we're having the biggest problems.
Mrs. Stefano?
Bo, you did an excellent report. However, you did slide over something that I have a question about. You mentioned rentals. I didn't know this program covered rentals.
As part of both-
Sorry about that.
No, as part of both NSP One and NSP Three, part of the national objective is to assist low, medium, moderate income individuals, which those individuals can typically afford to buy a home, the 120% of area median income, and also one of the national-
Slow down.
Okay.
Slow down.
Okay.
All right. Regroup here. Regroup for a minute, okay?
Okay.
It's very clear to you, but there's mud between you and I.
Okay. Okay. As part of NSP One and NSP Three, one of the national objectives when they were drafting legislation was not only to redevelop foreclosed properties and, and help that situation out, stabilize neighborhoods, it was also to benefit low, medium, moderate income individuals, which is, on this graph, the 120% of area median income. And those individuals can typically buy a home if, you know, credit's right, they have an income that can sustain owning a home. Another national objective is to benefit individuals with 50% area median income. And if you look at their income limits, those individuals typically aren't suited for homeownership because if something happens at home, even if you subsidize a home 100%, which is generally a bad idea, if something happens at home, they need to replace something, $1,000 is a big hit for them. So the way to accomplish that in NSP One and Three is through rental property. In NSP One, we partnered with a nonprofit called Mid-Florida Housing Partnership. We have a mortgage and deed restrictions, which talk about how they maintain the home to make sure it doesn't become a problem in the neighborhood. And essentially, the nonprofit is maintaining the home for, they have no cost from the city. So they take that rent in, they use it to pay someone to mow the lawn, to put in a reserve account to make sure if something happens, they can repair the home. So that's how we've managed meeting those national objectives.
So it's a nonprofit, it's not Joe Citizen buying that house and then renting it?
Right. Right.
Okay.
It's Mid-Florida Housing Partnership out of Daytona. They're the ones that do foreclosure counseling here. They work with Valerie at the county. They've been in business for about 20 or 30 years. So, and we've had, you know, relatively no complaints from the rental units and they've been here.
Thank you.
Counsel, questions? Let's open the meeting to the public. If anyone in the public wishes to be heard on agenda item number two, the NSP three plan. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion? A motion to approve the agenda item?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the consent agenda items four through seven. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, may we have a motion to pursue, to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Vote to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to public participation. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on any item not on today's agenda? Oh, come on.
They all spoke already.
Come on, Jack. Come on.
Jack wants to-
Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to city council for discussion by city council matters not on the agenda. Mr. Mormon, we'll start with you.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Lewis.
I pass.
Mrs. Stefano.
I got some warm and fuzzies, as the manager says. Last workshop or one of our meetings, we heard about the dog park. And since my husband participates in the seven o'clock crowd that takes their dogs-
I didn't know that we were assigned time.
Oh, yeah. The seven o'clock crowd is very, very happy with what's being done at the dog park and they're just, they're very pleased. And then the waterfront park, I've had many compliments about the beauty of the waterfront park. So those citizens watching today or listening today, if you haven't seen waterfront park, I would suggest you go see.
If you don't have a dog, you ought to get one.
Yeah, get a dog, yeah.
I can load a mine.
Is that it, Mrs. Stefano?
That's it, sir.
Mr. Meeker.
Just a real quick question on something. Jim, down around the movie theater, we had some discussions a while back about handicap parking. Did that get resolved?
Yeah, we put it all in. They were, a couple were put in. It's not easy to retrofit handicaps, but staff did as many as they could right in front of the theater.
I just want to go down and do a numbers count. I was just kind of curious how many we picked up on something like that.
The actual handicap space is in the parking lot, but it is not-
But for some reason, everybody wants to fight for the handicap space right out front.
Yes, yes.
Is that it?
That's it.
I have just a couple of things. We've all, I assume we've all received communication from the county with regard to the economic summit. They have selected a facilitator and they have presented us with two alternative sets of dates, March 4th and 5th, that's a Friday and a Saturday, or March 18th and 19th, also a Friday and a Saturday. I don't think we need to decide today, but be prepared at the workshop to make a recommendation. Now, keeping in mind that March 19th is the Irish Social Club St. Patrick's Day Parade, council has been invited to participate in that. Collaterally, we need to know, we need to tell the parade committee who all's attending or the marching or riding or what have you. Also, with regard to the economic development summit, the county has determined that each municipality should invite two citizen participants, two residents who can bring a public perception to the discussion. So in our next workshop, we need to come up with some suggestions for who we're going to invite from the public. Lastly, I was approached by the Board of Realtors who at the home show received a whole bunch of questions, not so much about how do I buy or sell my home, but what is this list pendants stuff? What is foreclosure? What is short sale? What do I do? Is there counseling available? So the Board of Realtors is putting on a public symposium seminar, what have you, March 26th at the Board of Realtors meeting in the morning, I believe. They're going to have a panel that will include an attorney, a banker, people who can talk to these issues. I've been invited to participate to talk about the neighborhood stabilization plan and I'm going to drag Bo along as the technical person. But for those people who may be listening to this broadcast, if you have questions about the current state of real estate, what is foreclosure? How do you avoid it? What are my options if I'm in foreclosure? What is list pendants? Assuming that you're on the wrong end of the lollipop stick as it comes to foreclosure, what are some options? How can NSP help me? Can it help me? March 26th, 9:00 AM, Board of Realtors, we'll try to get some more information out to the public, but that'd be an opportunity for people to learn about what's going on right here in Flagler County. That's-
May I have a second bite at the apple?
Sure, as long as it's a tiny bite.
Okay, let's go. I need to go back to the economic summit and the letter we received because if we discuss this, if we want to make a decision on the questions I have, we can't do it at the workshop. It was my understanding at our economic development, we must have had close to 30 people, elected officials there, and it was my understanding that that group of people would agree on who would be invited to conduct that economic summit. And second of all, I was under the impression that all the people in that meeting were sufficient to attend that summit. And as you well know, there were, I don't know, close to 30, 35 people at that. And to add another 20, 25, I don't know how much more would be gained by that. So I don't know if council has an opinion on that or-
If I may, let me, if I can comment.
Okay.
Because this was discussed at the last Enterprise Flagler Board Meeting.
Okay.
And yes, we had talked about some kind of a mechanism that we'd all contribute our thoughts on who might be a good facilitator, but the county realized that if time is of the essence, by the time we tried to give everybody an opportunity to have input and then went and narrowed down the list only to find out that somebody wouldn't be available, they determined that in the interests of expediency, they have selected someone who had some dates available, who has had experience in the area of economic development, has conducted a recent facilitation exercise up in Jacksonville that a number of folks attended. So just, they, just to make things quicker and easier, they've selected somebody who seems to be acceptable to the majority. They've asked that very, the second question you raised to the, of this potential facilitator, can you handle a group of 35 elected officials plus 10, 12 additional residents? I'm figuring the county and five municipalities, that's six times two is 12. And he said, yes, no problem.
All right, all right. The second part of my question also is a site selection.
That was also discussed and the consensus was we need to find an impartial location. Having it at City Hall or having it at the county government services building presupposes some kind of ownership.
Right.
And they've talked about trying to find an alternative location that doesn't-
So they are looking at an alternative?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. That was one of my issues.
I'll just jokingly say that the snow base is good in bail. Just kidding.
And the casinos have great casinos. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think that concludes council comments. Discussion by a city attorney that matters not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick reports. I'm sure all of you have been following, as we have, the changes and movement up in Tallahassee regarding the regulation of pain clinics. As all of you are aware, it affects all of the local governments in the state of Florida. We have a moratorium. A lot of other jurisdictions have done the same things. Some jurisdictions have actually gotten in the business of regulation. We believe that's still premature until we have a better idea of what's going to come down from Tallahassee. You've got that registration, the pain clinic registration, you've got the attorney general that's indicated that there's going to be ultimately greater regulation of these from a statewide level. But I just want to let you know that that is a moving target and we're keeping an eye on it. Number two, as you may remember, the city passed three fairly large comprehensive, comprehensive plan amendments dealing with their NCOA and a couple of large potential developments and DRIs out there. Those have been winding their way through the state process and there is a meeting currently scheduled for March for the stakeholders, if you will, to get together and talk about that. That, of course, also is a moving target. We hope to have a more receptive audience when we go up to Tallahassee this time. So I just want to let you know about that. And lastly, and this is another one of those that, and this one actually is a moving target, and that is red light cameras. As you're all aware, the, there's been some really good statistics that have come out of national studies recently about the positive impact on traffic accidents that these cameras do create. And that, of course, is very valuable to the local governments that have been regulating this traffic movement. As far as the existing litigation goes for the city, the plaintiffs in that matter have again, in this time, they stipulated to dismiss their lawsuit without prejudice based upon arguments that have been made as to the, some of the issues and faults with how they have pled their case. So while we certainly expect that lawsuit will come back temporarily, it has been dismissed without prejudice based upon a stipulated order that the other, that the plaintiffs consented to. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question for you, Mr. Eichmann. We now have in Flagler County, I think on the order of eight of these so-called internet cafes.
Yes, sir.
We just saw that Seminole County passed an ordinance prohibiting them and I understand the city of Benel has recently discussed a prohibition or a moratorium. I know the attorney general to date has not come down one way or the other, but are you aware of any action pending in Tallahassee with regard to either approval of these entities or prohibition of these entities? Or if approved, regulating these entities?
Well, that's interesting and it's a little bit different than the pain clinic discussion because the pain clinics, certainly they're allowed, but they're being heavily regulated or in the process of, to move, again, moving to extend of the regulation of pain clinics. With internet cafes and the other, they're called by a lot of different names, but the bottom line is this, in the state of Florida, it's illegal to gamble, but then there are exceptions. There are exceptions as to locations and groups that can have it. Obviously, you can, you can have pair of mutuals. I mean, that's gambling, but it's specifically carved out from the general rule. It's an exception that's carved out from the general rule that we don't want gambling in the state of Florida. Well, there are some specific exceptions that have been carved out by the legislature from the general rule that slot machines are illegal. For example, they call it the Chuck E. Cheese exception and where you don't get money directly when you play this machine. And a lot of it has to do with, is there luck or is it skill? And the arguments go back and forth. So the answer to your question is, I am not aware that there's any movement in Tallahassee to change the nature of the statewide regulation of these internet cafes per se. I think that's going to fall upon local governments to get involved. And how do you do that? Generally speaking, the easier way is to do it by zoning and land use, trying to keep them in a place where there will not be negative secondary impacts on the surrounding properties. Now, that doesn't deal with the negative impacts on arguably the people that frequent and use those facilities. That's where you can't deal with that problem by zoning. You're going to need to deal with that by the regulation of the use of the machines and the businesses themselves. It can be done, legislation can be crafted, but then, as always, it's a matter of how, of enforcement and having the staff necessary to go in there and enforce these. And so that obviously is a more difficult policy decision. Do you want to get into the business of regulating these types of establishments? And some jurisdictions are making the decision to do that.
No, I think that's way beyond the capacity of this city, but it seems to me that the state has an implied obligation to regulate these. For states that have legalized gambling, they have gambling commissions and they talk about what kind of games you can have and what kind of, forgive the expression, return on investments you can have and what constitutes fair. We, the public presumes because these things are here in our city, here in our county, that they must be fair, they must have a, an appropriate return or likelihood of winning or so on and so forth. It just seems to me that as we get a chance to talk to our legislators, the state needs to, to establish some parameters, some guidelines for how these operate and what kind of-
Or, or having the state direct or designate funds necessary for the statewide enforcement to be more proactive on establishments that are not actually using or operating consistent with the intent and the letter of the exceptions that have been carved out in current law.
My thinking is the state was not particularly enamored with red light cameras until they realized it was a revenue source. And then they jumped in with both feet and both arms. Well, it seems to me that gambling in whatever you call this, there is a potential there for licensing and revenue generation for the state. Why not, why don't they get a piece of the action? So anyways, something our legislators probably ought to take a look at. Discussion by city manager matters not on the agenda.
Do I dare? No, actually.
Here in adjournment?
I have a couple of issues. One of them, the mayor brought to me last week when he attended a chamber function and heard about impact fees and businesses that are trying to either expand or move in or do some, well, it's just, could be a combination of either one of those. A lot of stories being told. First of all, you may recall in Prosperity 2021, we talked about using impact fees as an economic development tool. And for the right business creating a lot of jobs, you know, that is a common incentive to pay, pay impact fees. We've talked about that with others. These small businesses that have competition, one of them recently is a pizza store. Well, then it becomes a lot more pragmatic issue as far as, okay, you charge one and not the other and you start getting in the middle of that. However, there is a element out there of trying to fill our empty spaces in our shopping centers and there's some good arguments for that. And we are taking a hard look at some other options regarding impact fees for those, fill in the vacant, vacant spaces. I do want to stress that the stories I hear are unbelievable as to all over the board and the lack of getting the facts correct before we tell stories. And so I, if you do hear some of the impact fees issues out there, please let us know. We're trying very hard to make them as reasonable as possible based on the circumstances. I am going to give one example right now, and there's others, that you have a, and this one is, let's say, the BP station out on Palm Harbor, close to our new fire station. I forget why, is that Farmsworth? Doesn't matter.
Well, Palm Harbor Parkway and Farmsworth, the corner.
Okay. You know, this is one of those no good deed goes unpunished because they had two spaces for rent on both sides of their convenience store. We said, okay, the whole thing's a convenience store. They said, no, no, that's just retail. Well, retail is quite a bit slower impact fees. So, okay, they paid retail. Well, what wants to move in there?
Tastes pizza.
Just pizza, yeah. Something that is, generates a lot more traffic, uses more water, et cetera. So they came in to pay, the builder came in to pay the bare minimum and tells us it's going to be one thing, but then six months, a year later, a different type business moves in than what they paid for. The challenge is- The challenge is, is that that small business just trying to get started is now being asked to pay this fee that really the initial builder should, should have paid. And, and you can see how then that generates, you know, how we're being unfriendly to those small businesses coming in, when really we were trying to be friendly to get the thing started off and then, uh, what we were told, and, and I don't even think that, uh, the person knew at the time. So there's a lot of those other stories out there. We're going to try real hard to, to, um, work on, if it's an old, been there for a long time and it was a office, and then they want to convert it into a deli or, you know, something else that, it has more water impacts on us and more street impacts, but it's been there for, on Old King's Road for 20, 30 years, that's a little different, different story. And I think, um, you know, the mayor asked us to take a look at is, what's, what would be fair for that. Now, still have to be careful about getting into that competitive business, but we are, we are looking at that. Please let me...
I could see us reducing an impact fee for a, a new business and then having to retroactive back to 1999.
That's what you heard today, yes. But do let us know when you hear those stories, um, and, uh, we're, we're trying very hard to, uh, help people. With that, with that said, we have some other economic development news. One of them is, is Bo, as in our Prosperity 2021, it, it has worked with the Small Business Development Council and SCORE and, and the college and trying to work on a business assistance center, uh, something that, uh, helps business. Maybe that's government procurement or, uh, a business plan and, and those type of things, but, but have it, instead of being a Volusia County and, oh, they'll come on down here, but actually have it right here in Palm Coast and trying to get that developed here for, for things. That was consistent with what we talked about in Prosperity 2021, to assist, uh, our existing and potentially new small businesses. Lastly, um, uh, this is, I guess, under the category when it, when, when things start happening positive, it's, uh, it's, seems to snowball a little bit. You all know that, um, a couple of weeks ago, we were visited by international, or wanting to be an international company, uh, to establish headquarters in the United States, and we were on the shortlist of three or four communities. We're still in the running and, and working with Enterprise Flagler, the county, uh, some, some local property owners, the Chamber Commerce, et cetera, and really hope, uh, have, have good hopes that, uh, we've got a good shot at, at this, uh, business. It would be a combination of, uh, corporate, US corporate headquarters, um, marketing, not marketing, well, always have marketing, uh, research and development, uh, manufacturing and distribution. Ultimately, they're hoping, well, start off with about 100,000 square feet, 100, 120 employees, could go up to as much as 500,000 square feet, ultimately 400 employees. So that's very exciting. Like anything, they don't want people to know what they do, so you don't hear any details at this point. Tomorrow, we have another prospect. We are finalist of two communities, about 100,000 square foot, uh, a lot of sketchy details right now, but, uh, they're hoping to have about 200 employees, uh, and, uh, I think it's going to be more of the manufacturing, distribution. Same combination, same team work, uh, working on this. Have more information after they visit tomorrow, but those two would be extremely exciting. They're, those are the, the big home runs. I can also tell you that we have two retailers, national retailers, looking at us right now. One of them, uh, is very serious, uh, getting into the design phase, and another one is coming in to take a look at a site later on this month and agreed to let me meet them out at the site with the property owner, et cetera. So, and that one is a midsize box that would generate, you know, uh, 100, 200 jobs also. So very positive. Lastly is in the telecommunication, we have two new telecommunication, uh, companies, uh, that are in town at the moment. One of them has not gone public and it cannot talk about, and we'll leave it at that. The second one, uh, has new, news releases out, if you are in the right business, in other words, all that wire business, et cetera. But, uh, O2, uh, they're actually based in St. Augustine, uh, received FCC, in other words, a federal authorization to establish cable business here in Palm Coast, uh, but wireless, uh, so that, uh, they will, if you have a, a laptop, uh, right now, you have to find a hotspot, uh, to get connected. This, uh, concept is more of a cell tower or cellphone concept where all of Palm Coast would be a hotspot, just like if you had a cellphone. Uh, excuse me. And they also plan to offer cable television type service. So, um, and they are working with us and, uh, we are working on contracts with, uh, our fiber net, et cetera, and, uh, also they want lease space in the cell towers. So that infrastructure that we built, uh, and they're talking about, about 50 jobs because, I mean, they have to establish a storefront here and that's their goal is, is 50 jobs. And largely because of our, see, I've done way too much talking this morning, haven't I? Uh, largely because of our, um, infrastructure, our technology attracted them here. So it's, it's always nice to actually see the benefits of, of some of those, uh, actually very forward-thinking projects that occurred in the past, the city council was, uh, took the lead, the lead on, and see the benefits today. I think with that, Mayor, um, enough good news for one day in my...
Mr. Lynn?
Savior of all.
Have we heard anything back from Iceman?
No, still have not heard anything back, uh, recently. Bo, have you heard anything from Iceman by chance? Frank, can you hand me your...
Absolutely. Here, here.
They're, they're still in the stages of acquiring capital to start operations, so capital markets are tight and they're still looking for capital to start their operations, but they're still, uh, very favorable to a Palm Coast.
Mr. Meeker? I did have a question for Jim. Jim, would you go back with the, uh, have another drink?
Yes.
On the, uh, on the pizza discussion, I, I think what, what we're hearing on the, uh, on the outside was that, you know, you have this existing business that had already paid impact fees and he's moving to a new location. Why pay impact fees again? That's what we're hearing now.
The, the original story was he was just expanding.
In his existing location?
Yeah, existing location, and, and then when I found out that wasn't true, I have not been able to confirm whether or not it's, uh, moving existing or, uh, expanding and keeping the existing and doing another satellite, uh, store. The question that Mr. Meeker got, uh, and passed on to me, that if I'm picking up a business and moving it from this location to that location, I'm not actually increasing the amount of traffic, the amount of water I'm using, so why can't I transfer my impact fees, if you will, and take it with me? Interesting concept.
Portability.
Portability. Uh, immediately then, who paid the impact fee? Was it the person that built the building? Because that's what, usually where we, lots of times we'll charge it, or was it the business when he moved in? And then who paid what portion of it, et cetera? But interesting con, concept of portability, and there is some validity to, to that. We just talked, uh, late yesterday, so I haven't gotten any details, but those are the kind of things that staying as flexible as we can. Anytime we have, uh, can do a, a payment plan of something with them, we, we do that all the time, but, uh, those ideas we were, need to look at.
But we're going to get down to the bottom of it and resolve to get the...
Yes.
True story as opposed to the, the, uh, the various, uh, stories that we keep hearing.
Uh, yes, and, and please, um, that's why I ask, when you hear those stories and people approach you, it's amazing how the, there's another side, another side to it. But I'll tell you, there was a, a daycare that moved out and a new daycare moved in. Our records didn't show, it was like it started off as office and then went daycare and then a new daycare. Now, our office didn't show that mid-level, that middle level of daycare, so we thought it was a new daycare, but it's been there for some time and we just said, okay, well, and now there's no reason to be paying that fee when it's just replacing. So we're trying very hard to be as friendly as possible based on the facts and the situation for that given, uh, project. Each one of them has separate facts and each one of them, we need to, um, try to be as fair as possible, not just to that new business, but the other businesses that, that have paid it. So it's a interesting tack, but it's very much part of our economic development initiative and trying to be business friendly.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, I guess I'll motion to adjourn the meeting.
We are adjourned. Thank you for your participation.